Call the meeting to order and ask to stand for the pledge allegiance.
.............................................
Good morning and welcome to the May 8th County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder, and if you need a listening device Craig can help you and he's at the front table up here with that. We'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to remove items number 11, which is a presentation from the Office of Equalization, and item number 13, which is consider a motion to authorize the transfer of $46,806.34 from the Sheriff's Office Budget ASN 16-500 to the 24/7 Sobriety Budget ASN 18-500.
Move to defer.
Second. I have a motion and a second. This is a motion to remove.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Then it would be a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meeting minutes from April 1st, excuse me, May 1st, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $2,834.828. Lots of eights.
Pay the bills.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is Minnehaha County Office of Public Advocates 2017 Annual Report, and that is on file at the auditor's office. Item number five is a motion to consider a motion to approve routine personal action. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatements recommended for approval and there are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is authorize the auditor to publish notice of hearing on May 29, 2018 for a retail on/off sale malt beverage license application submitted by MJC Holdings LLC doing business as Chasers Food and Spirits. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number B is authorize auditor to publish notice of a hearing on May 29, 2018 for a retail on/off sale malt beverage license application submitted by M&amp;M Gaming Incorporated doing business as State Line Casino. Is there a motion?
It's my motion.
Second.
And motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number C is authorize auditor to publish five notices of hearing on May 29, 2018 for retail on/off sale malt beverage license applications for the following Crooks Conservation and Gun Club Incorporated, Sioux Empire Fair Association Incorporated, Sioux Falls Campgrounds Incorporated, Uncle Ed's Specialty Meats Incorporated, and the Wall Lake Oil Company.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. There are none. Next we have opportunity for public comment. If there was anyone here that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda, this would be your opportunity. No one is moving, so we will move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a hearing on property tax abatement, RDI number 86828, in the amount of $2,335.49 for the property legally described as lots 4A and 4 block 4 Songbird addition to City of Sioux Falls. Craig, good morning.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. You have seen this item before and it has gone through several steps, so for the benefit of the audience watching on TV and the people in the room, I wanted to give you a brief summary of the events of how we got to the hearing today. Dan and Shaw Roth submitted an application for a partial abatement of property taxes on parcel 86828. The property is legally described as lots 4A and 4 block 4 Songbird addition to the City of Sioux Falls, and the applicant submitted a letter dated January 29, 2018. And the letter had indicated that they were previously residents of Turner County. In 2015, the applicants built a home in Minnehaha County. The applicants claim they have resided in the home located in the county since 2015. So Dan and Shaw Roth are requesting abatement and refund of the 2016 and 2017 property taxes because they were unaware of owner occupied status for their property. Further research had of tax records had indicated that the applicants received the owner occupied status in Turner County as evidenced by the certification of owner occupied dwelling signed in November 1998. The action that the city council has taken on March 7th was to deny the abatement. On April 3rd, the county commission approved the abatement. So the abatement was sent back to the city council for another review, and that was denied by the city council as entered on April 18th of this year. Hearing has been published. As far as notice, the applicants I believe may be here today to speak on their behalf, and we do have people present from the Office of Equalization should there be any questions regarding that matter.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Are there any questions for Craig before we move forward? I give the opportunity for the Roth family or the Roths to come and speak if they would like to. Yeah. If you just identify yourself and give your address, please.
Shaw Roth, 709 North Blue Bell Lane, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And we're just requesting abatement. We moved from Turner County, built our own home. My husband served as a general contractor. We did a lot of sweat equity on our home. I personally did not know how to tie rebar. I do now very well. We literally worked day and night on our house besides working two full-time jobs. And just very excited to move back into Sioux Falls. I grew up here. Never owned a home in Sioux Falls. After we married, we moved to Turner County and built our house there. And as it stated in the letter, we did receive the owner occupied. It was kind of a one-stop shop in Turner County. They come out, they assess your home, here's your occupancy, move in, you know, everything is done. We, when we got our notification for the 2017 payable and 18 taxes, we were noticing a huge jump, and that's when we started doing our research and said, they said, oh, you didn't fill out this one form with the county, you know, and this is, this doesn't, we thought once we had our occupancy permit, we would be done. That that was it. That was a city and a county separation. And that's what we hope that we can help resolve or make an easier one-step process for other people in the future as well.
Questions for Mrs. Roth. Commissioner Bennigan.
Ms. Roth, do you know how many times that the county may have contacted you or that you are aware of?
Once when we, when I first started the research process, they had sent the letter to our previous address in Turner County. We had lived in Sioux Falls in a rental property for eight months between the time when we were building our house after we had sold our home in Turner County. So I was aware of, they said they had sent one letter, but that was to our previous address. It never got forwarded.
Any other questions for Mrs. Roth?
Mrs. Roth, so you bought the land and then you built the house on it?
We bought the land in, was it September of 13?
So you acted as your own contractor and there was no realtor involved in selling you the house, right?
Correct.
Because a lot of times the realtor will tell you, and the title company didn't tell you either.
No. We went through our bank records and our mortgage paperwork and did not find any of those forms of the owner occupancy.
Thank you.
Questions?
Gerald.
I would just, I don't know exactly, I know we have a responsibility to follow the law. We're sworn to do that, but I have a problem with the system we have currently, frankly. I think the system that we have needs to be enhanced. I think the first letter can go out and be just a normal letter. The second one, if we don't get a response, we should probably consider certifying that. And the last step would be to send out a letter with a return receipt. Excuse me, I'm sorry. The reason for that is, you know, we've had two or three conversations about this, and all this could have been prevented if the system worked better. And the system does not work. The other thing that I have done a little bit of research on, or I wouldn't say it doesn't work, it needs to be changed or enhanced, almost every one of these that we've seen, and we've hardly seen any that I can remember, almost all of them were because the person acted as their own contractor, which I think is unusual. And the last thing, which I've mentioned a bunch of times, there's no reason not to apply. Not one. So the system needs to be fixed, and I don't think charging someone more money and having to be guilty before you're innocent, so to speak, is the way to handle this. And I frankly will make a motion to approve the owner occupied status.
Commissioner Bennigan.
The last time that we've looked at this matter, honestly, I didn't really completely understand the legal basis for our ability to abate this. And I did mention that ignorance of the law was no excuse, and I still think that's true, but now I have to say that my ignorance of the law was no excuse. And having looked at this more carefully, unfortunately, I mean, while I think there's an opportunity to improve the process going forward, I'm not going to be able to support abating in this situation because frankly, I don't think we have the legal basis to do that. As a commission, we are sworn to uphold the law, as Commissioner Bennigan said, and as I've looked more carefully at the law and sought legal counsel on it, I don't think we have a legal basis here to, to take the action that you're suggesting, and so I will not support that today.
I have a motion to uphold the abatement, to the owner occupied status. Is there a second? Is there a second? For lack of a second, additional comments. You can sit down, Mrs. Roth. We'll ask you if we have a question. Commissioner Karski.
I have a question and more legal, and I was trying to find it on some of our emails. And I apologize, Maggie. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but if I may, Chair, address a question to our legal. We had two abatements, and one was we approved and the city also approved it. It was based on the discrepancy of them saying they did, he said, she said type of thing. The property taxpayers said, we sent it in, and we're saying, well, we never received it. Can you help me understand where one is maybe legal and the other one isn't?
Thank you.
Did you, did you send out a memo on that? I apologize if there was or not. I was trying to remember. I remember, it seems like I remember reading something on that.
So I believe that there was another abatement that the commission approved abatement of the taxes which went to the city, and I believe the city, it's my understanding, approved that abatement. I don't know, I can't speak to the details of that because obviously I wasn't there, but it's, I would conclude that that is the item that you're thinking about because there was another abatement similar in nature, similar to the question about whether or not someone had noticed. And I think, Commissioner, that that might be the item you're referring to, and yes, that this commission approved that, it went to the city, and then the city also approved that abatement. But beyond that, since I wasn't there, I really can't give any more details about that.
Commissioner Bennigan did provide to me, so basically, basically it comes down to there's no precedence for denying an abatement based on a mistake being made, as from what I understand.
This is a public hearing, and so we need to allow the other side to speak if there's someone that wants to speak on the, on the reasons why we should not grant owner occupied status.
Good morning, Commission Chair and County Commissioner.
Identify yourself.
I'm Ryan Sage from the City Attorney's Office with the City of Sioux Falls. I briefed you with the letter essentially on the city's position. I also copied the Roth family on the letter. This is nothing about the Roth family versus why this abatement should not be granted, solely that the law, from the city's perspective, does not allow for the county commission to do that. And so if there's any questions, I'll certainly entertain those, but I think we've laid out our position in that letter to the county commission. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sage. I don't believe I got the letter, so I haven't seen it. If I did, I missed it because I haven't seen it. That's fine.
Hi, I'm Counselor Teresa Staley. I did vote to approve this abatement when it came before the council. It was the sole person. But, but when it comes to, let me just say, when it comes to certified letters and notifying our citizens, that is huge. And a little over a year ago, we had an instance where we were ready to annex a citizen who had no notification that they had, that this was coming. The city said, we sent out what we needed to, but, but there was no verification the citizen ever got it. So Commissioner Bennigan's suggestion that this needs to be fixed, to me resonates for the benefit of our people. And so I understand state law, but sometimes common sense comes in and compassion, and it says, yeah, let's do this better moving forward because due process is so important for our people. And I never want to see a citizen abused because they didn't cross their Ts and dot their Is. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Mr. Cunningham, if you'd give your name and address, please.
My name is John Cunningham. I reside at 4904 South Oxbow in Sioux Falls. I don't know the specifics of this particular one, but I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Bennigan's comment. The, the situation seems to arise only when the people are their own contractor and nobody advises them that they need to make the application, as I understand. But the Director of Equalization knows who those people are. That is, they know who all the new construction that's completed in a particular year is and who has applied. And it would not be a difficult thing to have them send a letter to all the people who didn't apply and say, you need to do this. Because the law clearly intends for those people to get that exemption. And so I think a simple letter to the people who haven't applied, and it's easy to do to separate them out, would be a good addition to your customer service. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Additional comments? Commissioner Barth?
I share some of Gerald's concerns about the complexity of this. I'm, I'm not going to support remediating this situation, but I would suggest that the actual solution should be to do away with exemptions. We have exemptions for elderly, we've got them for homeowners, we've got them for ag land, we've got them for disabled veterans. If people just had to pay their taxes, we wouldn't have to do all this crap. And to be honest, the legislature does this and says, hey, we gave you a tax cut. They're giving them a tax cut out of my wallet, so to speak, out of the county's funds. I think that we should make Sanford and Navara pay their full taxes and let the state rebate it to them. Let them send millions of dollars back to them. Let us collect the full amount of taxes due, and that would cut out the need for these extra notifications and stuff.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. I'll just weigh in. If I would have been able to make a second, I would have seconded Gerald Bennigan's motion. I realize that the law probably says it's not legal, but sometimes you need to make a statement that what the law has written is wrong. I don't believe that whoever wrote that law intended to trick people into not being able to pay or having to pay additional property taxes. And if you went to Walmart and bought something and they overcharged you, they would refund your money. I just think this is common sense, and I realize that's not the way the law is, but then we better fix it because this happens, and it's not fair to say, oh, just because you didn't sign a piece of paper, you're going to have to pay an extra $3,000 or an extra $50 or an extra $20. You shouldn't have to do that. So I won't be supporting the upholding of the property tax. Additional comments or a motion?
Move to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny the change to owner occupied status. Although we'd better have a roll call vote.
Barth?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Bennigan?
No.
Karski?
Aye.
Hi, Berger.
No. Motion passes three to two. Thank you for your time. And that will move on to item number 12 is a brief presentation on the Minnehaha County's, on the Minnehaha Conservation District activities and programs. Mr. Parker.
John Parker with the Minnehaha Conservation District, District Manager. Thanks for the opportunity to come and talk to you. I think I was here about four or five years ago, and the district was in a little disarray at that time. And since then, we've tipped the tables and we're on the upswing and been good for quite a long time, for what I consider a long time, three, four years. On your outline there, it gives you a rundown of what we did last year as far as, you know, we had our programs. We do grass seedings, tree plantings, mowings, weed control. We are also under the sediment control of the state underneath the state law, so we are the complaint department when it comes to us, and we bring it to the next step. So that one, there was one earlier this spring, and Jeff and I have talked about it, and I got some stuff there, nothing today, but I'll send him some pictures, and there's been some tremendous upstage on that. Producers responded and working well on that, so. And we'll work on our part. Because the land adjacent to his land is the Dewey-Gavick site that you had a flyer on there, and that's 100 acres. And so it's very important, used by the public. There's about 2,700 people that we've counted through trail cams and people counters that use it on an average yearly, and lots of kids. Boy Scouts use it, Isaac Waltons, so it's a major community factor, so. But the major thing is, we yearly request some funding just to help us support our administrative uses. And this year, a lot of the money that we've gotten from you in the past, we have in a savings account, but a lot of that's going to go to work out at the Gavick site, so. To fix up the trail that was damaged by the neighbors consideration or in consideration. So, on that one. So again, we cover the whole county from Minnehaha, and we work with Lincoln County on their seeding programs down there, so we're in conjunction with Lincoln and Minnehaha together. So I guess the biggest thing is, is that if you find when you're going through your funds that we appreciate what we've been getting, like to receive it, and the money will be put to good use, and if you got any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Parker? Commissioner Barth?
Chair being liaison there, I've not gone to many meetings, but John, it was really timely to be at the meeting where we talked about the land over there by Wall Lake. That land also serves basically as a large riparian barrier for all the watershed coming down into the lake there and filters out contaminants and stuff. And I think we're planning on doing water testing this summer out there, as it was an issue in the media last year in partnership, that is, with the Friends of the Big Sioux River.
Yeah.
But this is another issue. There was some comment about the landscaping requirement on CAFOs and our, and our planning and zoning. Could you explain your perspective on that briefly?
Well, the perspective, the perspective from the district part is, is that the CAFOs are, understand is used to, on the farmer's end of it is, is to identify the number of head of cattle or something that they can control to have on their property. And in that conjunction, there's requirements or recommendations for setbacks and feedlots and, you know, and what should be a pasture and what should be a feedlot or what should be considered. And the numbers change, the days, the days change, the numbers change. So I think there's some conversation that needs to be done through the county with the zoning and everybody, and we'd like to be included in that, and I'm sure the NRCS would be too, that some of these producers feel that their pasture, but they bring cattle in, and the days get longer than what the window is, and then it turns into a feedlot. And in this case, where we're dealing with out there, that's what has happened. The number of cattle that's required on that property is fairly small. The number he has on there is fairly large at that given time. So, but there's no stipulation to be able to enforce that, that changes. We've had the conversation with him many times about doing buffers in trees, and he's in conjunction, and he's going to do that now. And not per se, just him, but others, other people too, so, you know, but that would be, so.
All right. Thank you, John. Thanks for coming.
Yep, thanks.
With that, we'll move on to item number 14. Consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for the 2018 pavement stripping program project P 002000217, PCN 04 LP.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothia, Highway Superintendent. Every year about this time, we enter into an agreement with the Department of Transportation. They conduct a striping program statewide, and they break it down into different districts throughout the, throughout the state. And in the southeast district where we reside, they've got a contract put together for several different counties, and they funded the entire state with $500,000 again this year and, and offer to contract with a contractor to do striping in these various counties in our district that wish to participate. We spend more than our allocated dollar amount, and so we have to pay above and beyond the 60-40 match that the state offers. And so this year, our total project cost is estimated to be $178,136.61. That's just an estimate. After the 60-40 match, we have to pay 100% of our, of our total project costs, and so our estimated project cost for this project is $138,380.86. And the state requires us to execute this agreement, and then they will task their contractor with striping our roadways. So if you have any questions, I can, I can try to answer those now.
Any questions for DJ? Commissioner Barth?
Unless we need to buy a new stainless steel spraying truck, I make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I'll have to say that the outside edges of the roads are now going to be striped with six-inch white lines, which I think is great. They'll be a lot more visible at night and also during the winter time. Hopefully be able to see them a little bit better. So I was excited to see that, all the county travel that we do. So, thank you. Item number 15 is a briefing on the northeast area of Minnehaha County Transportation Study. DJ, you don't look like Jason.
No. Commissioners, we invited HDR Engineering to the meeting today to give a presentation to you. We had a public meeting on March 27th, and it was very well attended. And unfortunately, we weren't able to get any of the commissioners there at that time, and so we, we wanted to ask HDR to come in and give basically the same presentation. And it's about the northeast transportation study that we're conducting north of Garrettson and east of Dell Rapids up there, looking at the transportation network in our county highway system. Jason is a project manager for HDR and is going to give you basically the same presentation that we heard at the public meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. As we go through the presentation, if anyone has any questions, certainly just stop and go ahead and ask.
Jason, you just want to identify yourself on record.
Sure. Jason Chenstead with HDR Engineering, 6300 Old Village Place, Sioux Falls.
Thank you.
Okay. And so as we started going through the public meeting, you know, really what we're looking for is we have a portion of the county that's, that's north of Garrettson, north of Sherman, east of Dell Rapids. And so when you look at the county highway system, 121, 113, 109, 103. And so what we're doing is looking at a planning for some reconstruction in this area over probably the next 10 to 15 years. And so this area is a little bit unusual that we have as many kind of paved roadways adjacent to each other as we do. And so as the county goes through and does their pavement management program that identifies when and what type of improvements we need to make, this area, we actually have some pretty good surfacing on the roads that exist up here, and, and that's why this study right now is very timely. We're not really trying to make any improvements over the next five years. We're really looking a little farther out. And, and kind of the key here, Minnehaha County spends about three and a half million dollars on maintenance a year, understanding that we have 347 lane miles of paved roadways, that money doesn't go very far. And so we really want to make sure that we got some, that now that we have some time, to make sure that we're spending the dollars wisely as we move forward. And the point of the meeting was really just to educate the public on some options for what we could do with these road for what we could do with these roadways. And so, what we want to do is review the future costs of the facilities, mostly 113, 109, 103, and determine if it's feasible to keep them as asphalt or do we want to do some alternative surfacing. A lot of the, the process here is going to be working with the landowners and the folks that use those roadways. We had a public meeting like in March and now we're going through and, and scheduling landowner meetings for the corridors, the township, and some significant owners such as Moody County Dairy. And so, this is kind of a, not as much technical work. That, that timeframe in the study is pretty short. It's, we're really focusing on trying to get everybody's input as we go through. A lot of these folks that live along these corridors have lived there for a long time. They have asphalt roadways that they use now and we're trying to determine if that makes good feasible sense for the county to maintain those as asphalt. And so, at the end of the study, we hope to come to present to you folks on what type of improvements we would recommend to be implemented when these roads come due for those type of improvements. As we look at the corridors here, right now, if the county was to reconstruct about a mile of roadway in these areas, we'd be looking at about $700,000 to $800,000 per mile. And so, when we look at County Road 103 and 109, along with the, kind of the S curve between 104 and 102, we have about 14 or 15 miles that we'd have to look at, at reconstructing and making some upgrades to. So, possibly up to $15 million. One thing that's unique, as I've mentioned before, is between 113 and 103, including Highway 11, in five miles, we have four north-south paved roadways. And so, that's very different from the rest of the county as you look at your mapping. You pretty much have north-south asphalt roadways, about one every five miles. And so, that services the folks that live out there agricultural uses, really everybody. And the roadways that exist between them are typically wider gravel, mostly township roads. The other thing to point out in this area is, and I'll, I'll get to it on the next slide, is the traffic volumes that we're seeing out here have been diminishing over time. And so, if we were out here to, you know, today and, and these roadways, 113 and 103 were gravel, typically when we look at converting from a gravel road to an asphalt road, usually that 250 to 300 vehicles per day is kind of where we want to do that because after that, you start getting some kind of excessive maintenance on keeping those gravel roadways up. We had some good conversations with the township folks at the public meeting and they certainly concurd that their lower volume roadways certainly seen a lot less maintenance than some of their, some of their higher volume roadways. Just to point out a few things, I captured about a 10-year difference, 2005 to 2016. And as you can see, on Highway 114, we had about, almost 1,000 vehicles that used it 10 years ago, 15 years ago. And we're down to about half of that now. As we look at 109 and 103, both of those exceeded 200 to 300 vehicles per day. Now, both of them reside somewhere between 150 and 170. And so, when we talk to the owners, the folks that live along there, that was a little surprising to them, but they acknowledged that, you know, really their peak time is harvest. When they're doing agricultural items, you may peak a little higher than the number shown. But, on a daily basis, that probably represented what they, they seen as well. And so, again, when we look at the total volume that's using this road and the total dollars it would take to keep them in the same manner that they are with the surfacing, it's a very big expense for the county as you move forward. On average, a lot of your north-south roadways in the county, 121, some of the major ones that go all the way through the county would range in that 800 to 900 vehicles a day, which certainly trying to maintain that at a surfacing different than either concrete or asphalt would be very time-consuming. Options reviewed and so, how we explained it to the, to the folks that live in this area and own land out there, we really don't have any preconceived ideas on, on what we want the study to, to come up with. And so, we're going to do an array of, of different cost estimating. And so, we're going to complete a maintenance schedule and improvement schedule, assuming that we're just going to reconstruct these roadways as paved. And when we talk about reconstruction, it's different than maybe the projects that you guys hear when you're doing a mill and overlay project. The, the roadways out here, we have very narrow shoulders on. We get more complaints right now in 103 than 113 just because of not having any shoulders. We got larger trucks that are using them. So, as the county does improvements on these roadways, a lot of times they're redoing the typical section, widening out the shoulders, flattening out some of the in slopes and making them a little more conducive to what a normal roadway would be with shoulders. And so, that's a very good thing. On here, kind of our second order would be due to the low traffic volumes, we'd look at maintaining 113 as asphalt. That is a, a more heavily used north-south road that it certainly goes a lot farther north-south in the county. But, for 113 and, or for 109 and 103, we would look at basically doing some maintenance to keep it asphalt as long as we could, maybe that's 10, 15 years. And then, we'd look at a gravel conversion project. And really what that, in this case, would include was, would be processing the asphalt in place, maybe mixing some emulsion with it and putting that surface back down. And so, we're actually, I, I'm a board member of South Dakota LTAP and so, which is, does a lot of work with the different counties and townships. And we have a lot of trial projects going on in some of the counties where they're doing kind of a hybrid between gravel and asphalt. And so, some, this summer, we'll be watching some of those projects and what they're finding with the traffic volumes on them. And, and so, Minnehaw County is just one out of several that is looking at, you know, maybe some cost-saving features, but it's not so much cost-saving as just managing the dollars that you have. And so, and then the last thing, during this study, we also want to look at possibly some alternative connections. And so, the, the photo on the bottom here represents a connection from Highway 104 over to where the church is right on Highway 11. And that would really displace the need for the Highway 104 to 102 connections. So, is it possible that we could build a one mile of asphalt road and replace three? And so, this is just a balance of, of money really. And we, we actually got some pretty good comments when, at that, at the public meeting, seemed to make sense to a lot of folks. And, and so, this will be things that we look at through the study and we're asking some of the folks out there to give us some advice on or, or some comments on. So, our study steps really, initially, we held the public meeting. I think we sent out about 1,150 invites and we had a very good crowd, probably, I think we had, you guys remember about 80, 50? Yeah, so we had a little over 50, maybe 58 is, some number that had an eight in it. And I think everybody stayed around. We were there for about an hour and a half. We had somebody representing pretty much all of the items, folks from 109, 103. I would say a majority of the folks that weren't there were ones that had agricultural land along the corridors and maybe lives somewhere else in the county. We had some discussions with Moody County Dairy. We've actually had a follow-up meeting with them just a couple of weeks to go, to go through their operation, where they're cutting, where they're hauling from, where their feedlots are external to where they're milking. And then, finally, the townships, we'll be meeting with them together, the two townships. Their boundary is on 109. And so, one of the ideas is if we would convert these to gravel, would the county maintain them or would they be turned back to the township if they would take them? And so, we had good conversations with them. So, we'll keep following up with them as we go. Hopefully, by the end of May, we, we'll have all of our, what we call our landowner meetings completed. And so, that kind of sets the basis for us going through and doing our calculations. And so, one thing that we recently did, you have a section of roadway 124 that's two miles of asphalt that's south of Dell Rapids. We're going to look at that as well because that's not really a, a large thoroughfare. Traffic volumes are low. And so, we'll, we'll already have generated the cost per mile and so, we'll apply that to 124 and, and kind of do the same items and we'll start bringing them into some public involvement as well. But, we'll calculate, everything being paved, we'll look at calculating with going to a gravel conversion. One thing that we would do though, with the amount of homes that we have along here in our cost assessment for our lifestyle, our lifecycle costs, we would look at some sort of dust control, either magnesium chloride or, like I said, if we went and mixed the asphalt and put some emulsion in it, they gave them a harder surface that wouldn't cause dust. We would look at that as being something that we would like to provide just because I think we have about 14 homes that are on 109 and I think about 10 on 103. And so, pretty, pretty heavily as far as some rural homes there. And then, finally, coordinate with the DOT and the townships. The DOT, since we're connecting that, or if we, if we constructed that alternative route, we'd connect at an existing location out there. I actually drove out there this weekend and there is a hill that's just to the north of this intersection. So, we'd have to make sure that everyone's comfortable with the additional traffic and the site distance that we have. And so, from there, we'll bring that information back and we're going to kind of reverse it. We're going to take the information back to the small group settings, kind of go over with them and get some final comments. Then, we would hold our final public meeting, hopefully in, in September, and then get on the agenda to visit with you in October and just give you an update on what we found with the study. We may come back and say, you know, from all of the, the landowner feedback that we got and running the numbers, it makes sense to, to do what you've always done and, and keep them paved. Or maybe we'll come back with a solution that requires or, or recommends to go to some sort of gravel resurfacing. And so, we don't know what that'll look like, but certainly I'll look forward to coming back here in a few months and visiting with you all. And so, with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions. All of our information will be put on the Highway Department website as we go through this presentation. Different items have already been posted, so that's positive. Jacob Morris with the county is here today. Jacob and I are kind of the ones that are spearheading the meetings with the stakeholders, the smaller group meetings. And so, I think that's a pretty good update from where we're at so far.
Questions? Commissioner Bender.
Just a quick question and I don't know if it's specifically for you, Jason, but you mentioned that you'd bring the final report back in October. Unfortunately, our budget process ends in September. And if we have any surprises or changes, is there any possibility of getting something sooner?
Absolutely. We could do an update. And, and so, just remember one thing that we don't anticipate is we don't anticipate any projects for next year or, or anything coming out of this. You know, one thing that, that we're doing this early and telling the public early is we, we don't want to do one of these projects and come back and say, well, we're going to go to the county commission and recommend that we're going to go to gravel and we're going to do that next year. And so, with the lifecycle that's left in these roadways, and so, when you look at your pavement management plan, you have a lot of green roadways up here and that's very good. And so, you have some lifecycle left in them. So, we, we can, once we are done with the numbers, we can do an update. DJ can provide, we can maybe just do an update that goes in your folders as well. But, again, we don't anticipate really anything coming out for a project in, in these roadways for next year.
If I, just one quick, excuse me, follow-up question, sorry. Percentage of increase of the cost of doing a per mile from last year to this year? Do you have any idea what that went up?
Well, I, I don't. Historically, we usually look at 7% for construction inflation. And so, and that, that's kind of the whole ball of wax. So, if we looked at from today's dollars of being $700,000 a mile and we said, well, we're going to make these improvements 10 years from now, we'd use about 7%. And so, that kind of carries, we'll certainly have periods where we don't have a huge change, but it seems like when we do have a huge change, it, it's significant. And so, I started working down here in 1999. We were paying $38 a ton for asphalt. Now, we're paying $75 a ton. And so, we have these big shifts over time and, and oil prices certainly are not going to probably go down for us, so.
There's no questions? Commissioner Bender?
And you probably said this and I, I just missed it, but so you do have a few additional meetings set with folks in that area?
We have a lot of meetings left. And so, right now, we're working on scheduling with the folks that live along the corridor. So, the, the public, the first public meeting was to get anyone that owned land, anybody that was in Dell Rapids, Garrettson, Sherman, anyone that would use these as commuter roadways, along with anyone we could to come in and take public comment on. And so, these smaller group stakeholder meetings are primarily just when we meet with 103 and 109 and we're sending letters out, we're just meeting with the folks that have land or live along those corridors. And so, instead of having, you know, a thousand invites go out there, it'll probably be, I think there's about 50 parcels on 109, a few less on 103. And so, hopefully, we get 15 to 25 people at those meetings. And the townships, we're finalizing the meeting date with them. And so, we'll meet with them, go through and do our, our, kind of our technical analysis and then we'll come back and we'll meet with those same groups again. So, there's four to five stakeholder meetings twice and then we'll come back for a final public meeting. So, yeah, we got a lot of interaction yet and we've left it open to them if they want. If somebody calls in and, and wants a public meeting, they just let us know and we'll schedule a stakeholder meeting to meet with them as well.
So, stakeholders should just be looking for letters in their mailbox?
Yep, that's what we instructed them is. And for the township, we're actually coordinating with them directly because they're a small group and we'll meet with them both at the same time. But, it, it's too difficult with, with the folks along the corridors to call every one of them, get every one of them at the same time, so we'll just send them a letter. The plan is right now to do a meeting from 5:30 to 7:00 and then like 7:30 to 9:00. And so, we can do both in the same night and so, if somebody misses the first one, maybe they can come to the second one, so.
There's no questions? I heard you mention that on 109, there's about, I think, 15 houses, you said. And, and I'm thinking if you built a house on 109 thinking it's a highway and now are going to gravel, it could be upsetting.
Yeah, the, the funny thing, I thought we'd hear more of that at the public meeting. And, you know, a lot of them are just like, well, they understood with the dollars that are available. So, that was good to see. I don't think we lost anybody as far as what they, that the county has certainly a tight budget when it comes to these type of things. They like the asphalt road, the no dust. And so, I think if we did something, we'd have to, you know, like we said, include some sort of dust control or surfacing type that would be conducive to that, so.
How are the townships handling this? Because if we change this, obviously, we're no longer taking care of them and now we've just put additional roads on their maintenance schedule that they struggle with their finances too. So, what does that look like?
That's a, that's a good question. And so, the, they are the county, county's facility now. If they went to gravel, you know, we would ask them in their consideration to take those roadways on. They could certainly say no. And then, DJ and his staff would have to maintain gravel, which they're not really used to doing. And so, that's a concern. If, if the township comes back and says, you know, we don't want to do any of these things, that might be a reason why you keep them in the manner that they are. And so, this is going to be kind of nice. I think it can be used as a little bit of a case study for some of the other counties. I, I grew up up in Dool County and they had a conversion project that was about, it was, it was longer just straight east of my parents. And I think for them, they just got to the point where it was so beat up that they converted it. And, and so, hopefully, if we can be a little pro, more proactive, it, you know, won't get people upset that they weren't involved in the, in the process, so.
Commissioner Karski?
And I think those are the key words, proactive. We are out ahead of this quite a ways and we are involving public in their neighborhoods, their streets, their roads, whatever, however you want to look at it. It's a big neighborhood, but we are being very proactive in this and we are being very inclusive in the process too, so, thanks for the work.
Yep.
Thanks, Jason. I'm glad you came. Thanks, DJ, for bringing him because we didn't get to make it out of that meeting and I was feeling kind of bad. I was like, oh, I wish I could have heard what was said, so I appreciate that you brought it to us, so. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number 16 is liaison reports. Is there any liaison reports? Commissioner Bender?
Just briefly, we had a homeless advisory board meeting yesterday and Melinda left for each of the commissioners, a couple of items. The snapshot that we do, I think, is really helpful, you know, just to give you a really quick glance at some of the trends in homelessness here in the area. The thing that caught my eye on that snapshot is just the number of capital campaigns that are going on right now that I know folks in the community have been talking about. But, the banquet has a capital campaign, Volunteers of America has a capital campaign for homeless youth. And St. Francis House has a large capital campaign going on right now. And Glory House intends to break ground on their new facility in July. So, there is quite a bit going on. HAB itself is continuing to have good conversations about trying to restructure that entity. It was put in place by, back when Dave Munson was mayor. And honestly, there's, there, there's a lot of attention being paid to providing a little more structure, getting some new people involved. And so, we'll probably be coming before the commission, coming up here in the next couple of months with a kind of more of a charter that provides a little more meat on the bones for the structure for that organization and for putting together kind of working groups that, that address these social determinants. There was, there's also a sheet left about that that are primary causes of homelessness. And then, the HAB board will be more kind of overseeing those working groups is, is the idea that we're talking about right now. So, just to be aware. So just to be aware that there are some changes likely coming, and been very appreciative of the folks that have been really involved in that group for a long time. But I think there's consensus that there's, it's a, it's time to kind of re-energize the, the mission, so.
There's no?
Commissioner, just a comment on homeless advisory. I know a person that went on a police ride-along a week ago Saturday, I think, and they picked up three intoxicated individuals at the Bishop Dudley House. They weren't disruptive, apparently, but they were intoxicated, and that was, meant that they had to leave. And I guess my thought had been that the Bishop Dudley House would take those individuals. But I, if I, you'll let me go, I'll talk about another item here.
Go ahead.
Craig Dean and, and I went and saw Senator Rounds do a presentation at the chamber, and I got to say, I was impressed with the former governor's depth of understanding on a lot of issues that are affecting us in rural South Dakota.
And that was Craig Dewey and Dean Kersky. When you said Craig Dewey, I was like, who's Craig Dewey?
Sorry.
And this past week, Commissioner Barth and I went out to Hartford, and they had the groundbreaking ceremony for the Mickelson Highway, which will connect the east side of town with the west side of town. And they were already starting on dirtwork, and I can't remember, Jeff, now, when they said they're, I think it was going to be done this fall, but it has to be paved next year, so.
Looking good.
Same with some of the roads we've been doing, but they're very excited. Good turnout for that. It was nice to be included, it was a beautiful day to be out there. Any other liaison reports? Okay, is there any new business? Old business? I would just say that the commission is going on a road tour today, and that would be my old business. With that, I would look for a motion to adjourn the regular Minnehaw County Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Then I need a motion to convene into the special commission meeting for the 2018 Minnehaw County Area Tour.
So moved.
I have a motion, and I have a second, and we will adjourn after we have completed that tour. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned. And reconvened.